Sorry, I'm looking for Dave.
Anyway. I'm still looking forward to the ballgame. How are you? I did receive four months of people. Our first. Yeah. That's my baby, Riley Gold. Oh, yeah. We've got Riley Gold.
Yeah, I told her, I thought they'd be good there.
Yeah, because I probably, I would have beat their family if they cared that. It's something I can announce and discuss. Fresh little girl. She already has me wrapped around her finger. Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Okay. We have two boys. Yeah, yeah, so. We're ready, I'm ready for her. Yeah. After about that.
How many grandchildren?
Three.
Okay. Oh. So, they're still there? No. Still four.
I think that's, that's, it's still, they're the family. Two are in Chicago and two are here. They'll have a lot together.
Ready? Hello. How are you?
Are you ready? Huh? You ready? Yeah. If. If, if, if everybody's ready, uh, we will, uh, and we have a quorum. We have, uh, five out of seven trustees and I think one, two, two, the other twos are on their way. So, we'll call this meeting to order, the governance meeting, uh, of today's date. And we will start with, uh, Gary Prather. Consideration, item two A, consideration and approval of South Campus Health and Physical Education Building bleachers replacement contract with game court services in the amount of one hundred fifty-three thousand, one hundred seventy-five dollars.
Yes, sir. This is for, the original bleachers are there, have exceeded their service life. And now they've become a liability risk. So, we need to get those replaced.
And do, do we have any ADA now?
We accommodate, sir, but these bleachers were not built for ADA compliance.
But the new ones will have six seats or something like that?
Yes, sir.
Explain how the telescoping thing works.
Well, it's just a stackable set of bleachers. You know, how bleachers come down and just push them back and they stack up to about, all about six or eight feet. But these will, all the, uh, the new ones will be electronic.
Okay.
Well, I'd have to defer that to Dr. Jordan because more than likely in a range of about, uh, four hundred, Kirby, Margaret, something like that. Okay, I know you've had quite a few.
Any further questions, discussion? We'll move on to item two B, consideration and approval of District Staff Relocations Project Phase, uh, I guess that's two B, design contract with Bennett, Benner Partners in the amount of one million, five hundred sixty-two thousand, three hundred twenty-six dollars and forty-nine cents, not to exceed.
Yes, sir. This will move the project forward to get MLC replaced because we've already done the design work for it. And, I mean, the design, um, programming for it. And now we're in the process of designing.
Okay. What, we, uh, this, this indicates that we've already went through phase, a couple of phases prior to this. What is the total cost of, do you think, of this?
This total cost of this architectural contract and engineering contracts, about two point four million.
Okay.
Can you elaborate on the timeframe for, for this particular phase?
Kirby, what are we looking at? Four to six months?
I'm sorry, the timeframe?
Timeframe on this phase?
This will carry it all the way through construction?
No, but, uh, the, the design phase.
Oh, the design phase, we're gonna try to wrap up right around the first year.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, and we went from four floors to six floors. Do you want to touch, touch on that? Uh, you know, considerably more, fifty percent more space and I know we have a need.
Well, the programming dictates it.
Okay.
And that's about the best I can elaborate on because we have moved quite a few people. We have growth within this program.
Yeah.
And we've, uh, reassigned the area for the chancellor and his executive leader group. So, that is the reason for it.
Okay. And, and this is incorporating all the, the new design work that our aid principals are dictating?
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion?
Not at your point.
Okay, item two C, consideration approval of the Hermacy Johnson Hadley Northwest Campus Center of Excellence for Aviation, Transportation and Logistics HVAC Replacement Phase One, related contracts to the amount of one million, three hundred and five thousand dollars, not to exceed. Mr. Prather.
Yes, sir. This is part of our five-year MEP plan. For additional work being done over the next twelve, uh, two years, excuse me. So, there will be more contracts coming forward on that. And Harriet Britton is handing out a correction to the number. We originally had, uh, one point three in there where that's the total cost of this project, this year's project.
We'll amend that to read nine hundred and sixty thousand, two hundred and seventy-four dollars.
And seventy cents, yes, sir.
And seventy cents, yes, okay. And, and from reading this, uh, it, this is bond eligible, which means that if, if and when we get the bond, uh, approved.
Yes, sir. We could reassign those funds.
Okay. Any further discussion, questions? Okay, we'll move on to item, uh, two D, consideration approval of Northwest Campus Redevelopment Design Contract Phase Two A with Huckabee, Inc., in the amount of thirteen million dollars, not to exceed.
Okay, yes, sir. This is for design services and construction documents for the first phase of the redevelopment. This will allow for construction of new buildings that do not impact the existing structures.
Okay.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that, Gary? It's for the repla, please?
This will allow for construction of new.
Buildings.
Buildings that do not impact existing structures. In other words, that we can build these from the ground up without touching the main campus.
Okay.
Okay, and initially, I, I thought we had discussed, uh, eliminating the five buildings that were damaged, where the surface was damaged. And now I read in here that they might be resurfacing or refacing two of them, is that?
On this, you're looking at that we, the study was addressing the failing building facades. So, the assessment has determined, will make the determination, or has made a determination, that a couple of the buildings could still stay in play. They're structurally sound, they just need new facades.
Okay, and, and I would hope that a determination of whether that is economically feasible or appropriate? You know, because we're still, we refacade and we still have fifty, two fifty-year-old buildings, is that correct?
Structurally, yes, sir.
Yeah.
But they would be all refitted to twenty-first century learning environments.
Okay, so it's reconstruction on the inside and HVAC and electrical requirements?
Yes, sir.
Okay. What, where is, this is awarded to Huckabee, where are they located? Where are their major offices?
Fort Worth.
They're Fort Worth, okay. Okay, because I've, I've heard several comments, and I discussed this with the chancellor, that some of the local contractors would like to see more of our work done with local firms, assuming everything else is the same. And this is an example that one that is, so.
Mr. Chair, just a question. In regard to, uh, the buildings that are going to be built, I see under Exhibit B, the area of scope. Are these the, uh, buildings that we're talking about, based upon what we're looking at here? Exhibit B? That is correct. Okay. Are they the ones outlined in the blue, colored blue? The dark blue, yes. Okay, all right. Okay. And we're saying that the total will be thirteen million? No, sir. Okay. This is for, uh. Just the designs. You're looking at a total of about twenty-three to twenty-four million dollars. Okay, all right. Thank you. Again, this is all contingent of the bond passing.
So, what is the, um, this particular contractor has some subcontractors that are MWBE that would be working with them as well?
That is correct.
Okay, do we have what that percentage is?
I'll have to defer that to, how much? Twenty percent.
Twenty percent. Generally, in what area?
We'll have to get that information too.
Please, if you don't mind, thank you.
And, and I would, I would hope that when this design work is done, it's, it's done, keeping in mind high efficiency buildings, strong construction, maybe tornado-proof buildings and these kinds of things that are latest, uh, technologies.
Well, yes, sir. We will design to most efficient as the dollars will support.
Okay.
I would like to ask the chancellor to look into when items like these are coming forward where minority participation, MWBE participation, it would be, could potentially be significant. I'd like to see that included in the report of information coming to the board so that we can.
Excellent.
Uh, I, I think that's an important, we are a public institution, we serve this entire community. And I, I think it's important for this board to keep an eye on that. And I'd like to see that the, the, the attention to that raised a bit in the process.
We asked that question, but you're, you're saying it ought to be stated on.
I, I think if it, if it's in the report, the information coming to the board, it'll get a little more attention from us as well as staff throughout the organization. We need to make it a little more of a priority.
Thank you. I think we all, all agree on that.
Yes, and if I, if I may add to that, if we could also put in what area they're going to be providing the service, if it's construction, if it's architecture, if it's electrical, if they can elaborate on what that percentage and what they'll be doing. Thank you.
Any other questions, discussion? Okay, we'll move on to item two E, consideration and approval of contract award for development of business continuity and disaster recovery plan, parentheses, B, C slash, DRP slash, or parentheses, with Encura Consulting Group, LLC, in the amount of one hundred ninety-six thousand, five hundred dollars. Mr. Pacheco.
Uh, yes, this is Phase One of our business continuity disaster recovery planning. And so, we did an RFP earlier in the year and we awarded this to, uh, Encura. And starting in November, we're gonna start going through all the campuses and all the departments, uh, Encura is with a, with the IT department to start getting information so that we can start gathering and create a disaster recovery business continuity plan. And then part of that Phase Two will be the implementation of that plan.
What, what do you think the total cost will be?
It's really gonna be determined by what the business units and the campuses have for recovery point objectives. It's kind of a technical term, but how fast these systems have to come back online. If they determine that we have to have three-hour turnaround time, then the hardware and the software associated with that is gonna be commensurately more expensive. So, I, I don't know what that price is yet. That's what part of this phase is for.
Is, where is this firm based? In, in Encura?
Actually, I don't know. I'll have to find that out.
Is there an MWB component to this contract?
Uh, all our contracts, RFP, went through that and scored along with, uh, locality too. So, that was taken into consideration as part of the scoring.
Okay. We had multiple firms propose on it?
Yes, yes, we did.
Okay. Any further questions?
Yes, you said it was the RPO or the RTO, is that you're gonna target three hours? I'm sorry.
That was just an example.
Okay, so, I, my next question, I guess, is, um, is there specific data that we're targeting to include in that DR? Because that's, DR is usually the recovery of the data versus the business continuity. So, is there specific data that we're trying to target initially to bring up?
It depends on what the school defines, the business owners define. Uh, now, to be clear, IT, we do do complete backups. We have a COLO facility up in, uh, in Frisco, I believe.
Right.
And so, our data's backed up. What we don't have is a robust business continuity and disaster recovery to, you know, get back up to speed as quickly as possible.
Okay, okay.
I have a non-specific question. Do we at the college have programs that would train people to do the work of this company? And if we don't, you can research it, let's, um.
Well, we, we don't to a certain degree. Uh, this, these are, a lot of these things are high-level functionalities and require multiple disciplines across the IT domain. And so, any one area, cybersecurity would be an example, we do have a robust program for that. So, potentially, we could do that there. But from a, you know, from a backup point of view, from actually going out and interviewing the business units to find out what their importance, uh, data is, how fast they need to have it back, the classification, I, I don't know. So, we'll have to find that out.
So, one of the things I'm interested in is capacity building. And what I mean by that is building a workforce in Tarrant County from the lowest level to the top level that can support the operations of the college. And, um, one of the things I'm interested in now and in the money that we'll be spending over the next seven years is to make sure that as we spend this money, we are also incorporating programs within the college curriculum that supports our needs now, but that will also support needs in the future. So, um, I guess that's a challenge to academia and to corporate services, but that's something I'm really interested in. And I would really like to see us be more, um, three sixty in that purview in terms of, are we training people to do the things that we need to do? Of course, they couldn't do it now, but in the future. And so, that's something I think we should really take a look at.
Are you, you're talking about internal internships, for example, and, and things that our students could get involved in so they get training and experience?
Relevant training programs within the college offerings that prepare, could prepare people in, in the county at whatever level they are to go to work for the company at some time in the future, or to perform these kind of jobs at some times in the future.
All right. Thank you. Any further discussion, questions? We'll move on to item two F, consideration and approval of contract renewal of IBM Storage Power Support Maintenance with Sirius Computer Solutions, Inc., in the amount of one hundred fifty-four thousand, five hundred ninety-two dollars and fifty-one cents.
Uh, yes, the IBM Power Storage System is the backbone to our database that supports our Enterprise Resource Planning, uh, application, which is colleague and runs the entire school. And so, this is a maintenance, uh, one-year maintenance for that. That's all that is. It does the, uh, hardware failures as well as software failures, as well as updates automatically.
Questions? Discussion? Move on to item two G, consideration and approval of three-year renewable, renewal co, agreement with Cisco Smartnet, software support maintenance with SHI International Corporation in the amount of nine hundred ninety-five thousand, nine hundred fifteen dollars and eighty cents. And that would be three hundred thirty-one thousand, nine hundred seventy-one dollars and ninety-three cents each year annually.
Uh, similar to our, uh, maintenance agreement that we have with the IBM, this is our maintenance agreement for Cisco. Um, we have all our routers, all our phones, most of our network and equipment is Cisco-based. And so, that is the support for three years for that.
Is this relating to our Cisco lab specifically, or?
No, it's not related to our Cisco lab. That, that's actually handled differently, uh, not through our IT department that, that I'm aware of.
Okay. Questions, discussion? Let's move on to item two H, consideration and approval of contract award with indefinite delivery, indefinite quantity, IDIQ firms for information technology consulting and staffing partnerships, a partnership to correlate with IT project plan forecast in the amount of two million dollars, not to exceed.
So, this was part of our, during the budget planning part of the year, uh, earlier in this year, the chancellor and I were trying to work out how we can expand IT capabilities also to serve the three G AP programs. And so, we came up with this idea of instead of trying to hire salaried people, we would bring experts and staff and augmentations by pri- we would bring experts and staff and augmentations by project. And so, what we did is we went out with an R F P, we got thirty-two respondents, we did look at, you know, the minority, women-owned businesses as well as locality, gave them our criteria. And out of those thirty-two, we actually selected eight companies. And I can list those off here, but you can read them right there. And they will provide us staff and services, I T staff and services, as well as subject matter experts on various I T functions that will support the three G A Ps as well as internal I T functions.
Question about how much is this actually saving us, or is it saving us any dollars to do it this way?
This is the first chair, so I really can't tell you that number yet. But we will be tracking this closely because if it's successful, and this is based on what they're doing in R E N F too. They did something similar, so we're trying to take that same approach.
Yeah, this strategy allow for much more efficiency in addressing these dollars. It's really a no because it's not, you can't, there's no measured point to benchmark, if you will. But as it relates to getting the work done, this process will allow us to be more efficient in that way because in fact, we do have eight firms under contract, if you will.
In, in regard to that, that's a good point. So, so we would be able, be able to somewhat like a cafeteria model, I guess. So, as we, we need certain things done, we'll have these individuals there we can choose from, so to speak, like that and just call them and, like on the retainer, I guess?
Yeah, and some of them are going to have certain expertise more so in certain areas than others.
Okay.
Part of the master's contract is a two-week turnaround time, so we give it to them and they give us personnel in two weeks. That was the idea too, instead of homegrown our own or bringing, you know, people that may or may not have the skill set, this way, we can actually target specifically the people that we need and then have them within two weeks, have them for a project and they're good, maybe we'll keep them on for two projects or something. But it's all project-based.
So, another comment, just want to drop this in your spirits. Over the years, one of the things that Tarrant County College has done has been to be a stabilizing employer in the community, helped many people to, you know, be strong, supporting citizens. And I understand that every, every, a lot of things are going to the project-based concept. My concern about that is the, what that does to the, the tax base of the community. In terms of creating solid earning, citizens earning money, buying houses, paying taxes and supporting the economy, I think the first contract that we switched over like that was maintenance. But, and I understand that that's a trend, I just want to drop that in your spirit that it's, I know it saves us money perhaps, and perhaps we get more expertise at the front end. At the same time, we are, should be using public dollars to build a community. Not only are we building the college, but we're building the community, building the resources in the community, building the workforce in the community. And so, as we think about those kind of things, I just want us to kind of weigh both of those. For instance, right now, one of the big issues that people are talking about is healthcare. So, at one time, a person had a job and they had healthcare with that. With the new contracting schema that so many people are using and everybody's being an independent contractor, that puts the whole onus of healthcare and all those other things on the individual. And there's really not a safety net and there's really not the schema out there or the personal guidance for those individual deployments to take care of that. So, right now, that's contributing to a whole nother problem. So, I just need to drop that in everybody's spirit. As they think about these kind of decisions, yes, there's a benefit on this side, what are the downsides? And just, let's just think about it as we spend public dollars.
Thank you, and, and for the comments, and that's a good, a good thought related to the balance of stewardship and, and service and work we need to get done. So, if you might want to look at this as really, this is project-based. So, in fact, that when the project over, the opportunity to work is over. And that's one thing that we would want to avoid is hiring people and having to let them go, if you will. So, this is a little different than maintenance where maintenance contract isn't every day, we need maintenance all the time. This is, this particular item is, are not things that we need done every day. We need to get, to get them done and then when we're done, we're done. And it's not the need of service, but the, the point's well taken, thank you.
Thank you, any further questions, discussion? We'll move on to two I. Consideration and approval of contract to do for online test proctoring and authentification, authentication services with Proctor.io in the amount of two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Yes, Proctorio is a test proctor and authentication service that is used by the online connect campus to make sure that the, the tests are, are done in a, in a non-fraudulent way, I guess is probably the best way to say that. And so, this right here is just the one-year agreement for that service.
Is this in line with what we paid in previous year?
Yes, yes, it is.
Any further questions, discussion?
Is this based on a license, is that what it is that, that we're, per student that they're granted or?
Actually, I don't know that question, do you? By students.
It's, it's a license by, per student, okay. So, do we just purchase a certain amount?
It's a fixed amount.
Okay, and then if, if we exceed that, it's per, per license and exceed an extra amount or?
If it's a certain, if it's over that, then we'll have to, somewhere down the line, there'll be an adjustment.
Okay, thank you.
Fifty.
And what students these are?
The online connect campus.
Okay. How many students are there, Mr. Pacheco, approximately? Fifteen thousand, okay, thank you.
Any further questions, discussion? We'll move on to item two J. Consideration and approval of the purchase of a Ferrari, Ferrari, Cinder, Cinder Pumper Fire Truck from Lone Star Emergency Group for firefighter training program at Northwest Campus in the amount of five hundred and three thousand dollars, ninety-two, five hundred and three thousand ninety-two dollars.
That's correct, I am not buying a Ferrari, so. So, we've, we've been working with the, the training program out there and they actually currently have some pretty aged equipment and their advisory board has been encouraging them to upgrade that equipment for the purpose of, of allowing us to have the latest technology for firefighters as they go through our program. We spent some time evaluating whether a lease option would make sense to ensure that we're current over time, but we think with the age of the existing fleet, it makes sense to purchase one at this point. Staff will also be continuing to look going forward to ensure that we're recovering an appropriate fee from the participants and the other agencies that, that take advantage of this program. But Dr. Blankenbaker as well as Steve Keller are both here if you have any questions about the program itself.
And I, I think it's probably important that we have some of the latest equipment, so we're training firefighters on the latest equipment that they, they'll be using in their departments. Questions, discussion?
What do we do with the outdated equipment?
So, so we actually had quite a discussion about that, about whether this would replace that equipment and it would be disposed of. In this instance, they actually have some ancillary uses that they can use it for. Going forward, we'll, we'll make a decision about what the appropriate fleet size is based on the, if, as we upgrade the equipment. So, that'll, I think, have them with three units that they would retain with, with this one.
Would, would we use this on our campus if we need it?
No, they, they would call the Fort Worth Fire Department for that.
Okay, I'm just asking, they might want to lease it from us.
There you go.
Okay, thank you. Okay, item three, other briefings. The schedule of upcoming. Good evening, Mr. Greenhill. We knew you, we know you're doing very important business with the Supreme Court, so. The schedule of upcoming facility projects, Mr. Brather.
Yes, sir, do you want me to read through these or? Please do, okay. South Health and Physical Education Aditorium Steel Structure Recote?
Yeah, these are in your packet.
It's a little bit more than just a little bit of recote, the cowl wall system, which is a glass, will have to be replaced. The environment in a swimming pool area, enclosed swimming pool, you know, is very toxic. Any questions on that?
And the elevator maintenance, we know that's important.
That's very important, we're on top of that. And we do have a third-party contractor that manages our service contract and also our inspections.
What, what is item seven? Elsevier.
Elsevier is the nursing software, it's usually, it's done by cohort.
Again, when these items come up, they'll be backup information on all these, this is just topical at this point.
Okay, other briefings, we're going to the, item C, Integrated Instructional Learning Environments, Dr. Blankenbaker.
Good afternoon, President Heed, members of the Board of Trustees and Dr. Jovanini. Dr. Jovanini, thank you for the invitation for the Integrated Instructional Learning Environments Principle, which is one of the eight principles as part of Tarrant County College's strategic plan. And so, I am here today to provide you with a progress briefing on the work of the I L E, for short, Integrated Instructional Learning Environments. From now on, I'm going to refer to it as I L E. What we have done thus far, where we are today, and the direction that we will be heading toward in the very near future. So, what you see here and on your monitors is an activity progress timeline beginning with when the principle was first launched in January of 2018 at the learning symposium. And the approach that this particular principle used was first to assess the state of learning at this college. What is it that our faculty and students are currently doing? Where are the gaps that we need to address in our current state? What are other colleges and organizations doing in this area? And what more should we be, we ourselves be doing? And for us to formulate the direction that we should be going. And in many ways, we followed a design thinking approach. And in that design thinking approach, one of the first components is to approach this work from a position of empathy. And the empathy is to look at what we're doing from the lens of the student rather than what we think is best for them. There are a lot of individuals across the college that are involved in this work. And I want to first acknowledge the fact that we have a high-performing advisory panel. And several members of our advisory panel, those of who could be here today are here. And I want to take just a few moments to, to introduce them to you. We have with us Sheria Taylor, Tina Ross, Thomas Sosa, Victoria Yen, who is our program manager, Margaret Lutton, Kevin Harper, and Daiju Hoshino. So, these are several members of our advisory panel. We also had engagement during the learning symposium from faculty and learning support personnel. In addition, we have work teams that work as part of the advisory panel. We also administered two faculty surveys to all full-time faculty and adjunct faculty to ensure that we gathered their thinking and feeling as we formulated goals and action items. And we also had focus groups with students. And we currently have ten students who are serving as part of our work teams. Tarrant County College is, yes, sir?
How do you, how do you select the students?
The students were selected by, at the recommendation of our advisory panel members. And so, our advisory panel is comprised of faculty and staff. And faculty are closest to the students because they have them in their courses. And so, it was at the recommendation and the referral of those advisory panel members. Tarrant County College is fifty years old. We have always had a focus on the community. We made a promise when we were first formed to provide access to affordable and quality teaching and learning. And what we are focused on doing is now examining for ourselves what it is that we mean by quality and how is it that we want to improve on the quality of teaching and learning that we're providing to members of our community. So, the scope of the Integrated Instructional Learning Environments Principle is really focused on improving learning by using the neuroscience of learning, designing versatile spaces and adopting cutting-edge technology. And all of this is driven by the selected pedagogy of active learning, which I will talk to you about in just a few moments. So, the key components of our principle are pedagogy, technology, and space. And so, we've divided ourselves into three work teams. And supporting those three work teams are focus teams. And you see those focus teams delineated underneath each of the work teams. And this is a visual that the advisory panel created because we wanted to visually demonstrate the interrelatedness of these three components in the holistic student learning experience. And again, from the lens of empathy. We began our work thinking that all three components had equal, were on equal par with one another, undergirded by professional development. However, we took a team of thirteen individuals as part of our external benchmarking to the American Association of Colleges and Universities Integrative Learning and Signature Work Summer Institute. And it was during our own organizational learning as faculty and staff that we began to realize that all three components are really not at the same level, that it is the neuroscience of learning and how students learn that should drive exactly what type of technology and the kind of space that learning takes place. So, hence, you see the redesigned depiction of pedagogy as the primary driver in influencing the type of technology we should be adopting as well as the type of space configurations that we should have in our formal learning spaces in the classroom. So, we wanted to, for. So we wanted to, for ourselves, define what we meant by pedagogy, right? It's easy for us to say, we want quality learning. But what type of learning do we want to promote at Tarrant County College? So we commissioned a focus group. We did an all-call. It happened at Trinity River one afternoon. And faculty were quite engaged in wordsmithing their thoughts and ideas. And this is the definition, at the end of that afternoon, that they put forth. And this defines for us integrative learning, that integrative learning at Tarrant County College should foster an interdisciplinary, transformative, and collaborative environment that facilitates the conversion of theory into practice to develop world-ready students, okay? And I read this out loud because a lot of time and effort and thought went into crafting what this means. And if you've ever had a group of faculty in a room, you should know that it is a difficult process to have them come into final agreement as to what they all feel they have in common, right? So this was, we thought, one of our many wins for our principle. So the next thing that we wanted to do was for the pedagogy team to think about, how is it, when we say we are preparing students to be world-ready, what that process should look like and what that entails? For each of the work teams, we have an administrator, a co-lead, and a faculty co-lead. The administrator co-lead is Thomas Sosa, and Thomas is with us today. And the pedagogy co-lead, who is a faculty member, is Sheria Taylor. And so as we think about how to prepare students to be world-ready, one of the things we wanted to look at was, what are employers really desiring in terms of skills that they want employees to have? And so what you see on this slide are the six skills that employers, through surveys, administered by multiple different organizations, to include the American Association of Colleges and Universities. And so these are the skills that employers universally have indicated are important for students to have. So it's incumbent on Tarrant County College to create the conditions in which we help support our students so that they can cultivate these skills. So our obligation is not just to teach them the content of a subject, but we have to teach them beyond the content of that particular subject. For example, our role isn't just to teach them history, but we have to teach them all of these skills in addition to teaching history. So... Reginald? Twenty-first century, yes. Okay. So what we wanted to do was ask our faculty, how can we go about teaching students all the skills that employers say are important? We administered a survey to ask them two things. One is, what is it that they're currently doing? And the other is, what do they think they should be doing, right? So this is a visual that depicts around the outer circle all of the strategies that our faculty indicated would support the cultivation of those skills. And if you look at those strategies, those are really strategies that are different from what the majority of faculty are currently doing, which is lecturing. So these skills really are reflective of active learning. Because in active learning, what needs to happen is a better engagement between the faculty and the students, and better engagement among the students, as well as the student with the materials that they are learning. So then, part of what we knew we have to be doing is thinking about the type of technology that would then support active learning in the classroom. Our work team for technology is co-led by Administrator Dr. Caroline Hamilton and by Paige McMinn, who's our faculty co-lead. And Paige is here with us today. And Paige is also a lead facilitator for our Active Learning Academy and for our Integrative Learning Fellows. So based on the survey we administered and through the focus groups that we conducted, this is what we have learned. We have learned that the type of technology to best support engaged learning needs to be fluid within the classroom space. And by that, we mean accessible from multiple different points and usable by faculty and students at multiple different points of their learning spaces. We also learned that technology didn't need to obstruct the learning process, that it needed to be intrusive and almost invisible. And it also needs to allow for faculty and students to visually see what is it that they're learning and what is it that they're discussing with a 360 view. Faculty also said they wanted to have control over the technology from where they are, rather than having to go to the technology to try to control it. They also wanted to be able to have technology that allowed for student-to-student collaboration. And then finally, to have a framework available so that if they wanted to adopt a technology, the response would not have to be, no, you can't use it because the room doesn't have the capability or the capacity for you to be able to try out and do prototype or pilot a particular technology. So this is what we learned about the characteristics of the types of technology we should be looking at. Yes?
Does this include virtual reality, virtual...
Absolutely. And glad you mentioned that. And the virtual reality is the VR technology software that we're looking at. And the infrastructure that we want to have in place would allow for the VR technology to be adopted.
How is the software keeping up with the physical technology? You know, for example, if you're going to study history, do they have software that shows the Congress of 1776? Or, you know, things like that. I mean, that takes a lot of time to develop.
And that is exactly the scope of this particular work team. And under this work team, we have two other focus teams that are looking at that. So have we gotten to the point where we have adopted technology that will get at exactly what you're alluding to, which is discipline-specific? The answer is not yet, but we're heading in that direction. We have pockets of usage of this type of technology, but it's not widespread.
I'm sorry, I have a question. Relative to those pockets where they're using that, how are we measuring the effectiveness so that we can, going forward? We can either expand or modify as necessary.
Right. So one of the first things that we knew we needed to do was take an inventory of exactly what was happening and where. And based on that inventory, we are embarking on evaluating how effective that technology is. And even looking at the process by which faculty request technology, right? And what we were finding is that there was very little monitoring of the request process and the purchase process and the evaluation process. And Bob Patekow will tell you that were, that his team, as well as Caroline Hamilton, as part of her work with ILE, is looking at all of the above. So the next thing that we needed to do was to look at how spaces that we currently have and that we should create would support engaged student learning. The administrator for the workspace team is Margaret Lutton. And Margaret is here with us today. And the co-lead is Tina Ross back there. And if you see members of the advisory panel wearing blue, it's because we have adopted blue as the color of ILE. And blue is the color of intelligence. So I just wanted to point that out to you. Stop.
Mighty dark blue.
So we want to begin this discussion about space to share with you that if you talk to communication scholars, they will tell you that how a space is configured is a form of nonverbal communication. That when someone closes their door, right? It means privacy or don't bother me, right? Or if you look at how the desk at the Opel Office is positioned, it is positioned in a place of power, right? Similarly, when you walk into a classroom and you have a podium and classes are arranged in a row, that signifies that there's one person who is going to be talking and everybody else who is listening, right? And so we have, we know, a wonderful opportunity at Tarrant County College to reconfigure our spaces so that we're sending a different nonverbal message to our students, right? And that we're creating an environment that will help facilitate the type of learning that we want to take place, right? But we didn't want to do it in a vacuum. There is research behind what it is that we're proposing. And the research is research and a quote from someone who, or two authors, who provide seminal research in the area of higher education, and that's Chikering and Gamson. So if you read this quote, it says, "Learning is not a spectator sport," right? That for us to create an environment where students are not just sitting, but they are engaging with each other, that they need to be talking about what is it that they're learning. They need to write about it. They need to relate it to past experiences. And that they need to apply it to their daily lives. And unfortunately, the type of space configurations that we currently have don't allow for students to do that. So to further reinforce this is a learning pyramid where you see the level of student retaining the information that they're learning, as well as the overall learning experience increases based on how it is that they're learning. So if they're listening to something through a lecture, they retain 10% of what it is that they're hearing as compared to when they are discussing something or practicing. What is it that they're learning, as well as teaching others, right? So this supports the direction that Tarrant County College should be going. And so this is a summary slide to share with us that we have come to the conclusion, through our own internal research, through benchmarking, and also through our readings, that active learning increases student retention, all right? And that there are many benefits to active learning. And in the end, as we're thinking about the types of skills that our employers need, we need to create environments that promote creativity, that help us cultivate the communication skills of our students, and then finally, help our students to collaborate better with each other. This gives you an idea of the positive momentum of the ILE Principle and what we're currently working on. And if you look at the lower half of the slide, we sent a team to AACNU this summer. And we will be happy to report the findings of that team to you at a later date. And then when we look at what we're going to be doing in mid-October, we're sending a team, which is really an inter-principal team, to the EduCause Conference. So just to give you an idea of our near-future activities.
I have just kind of a general question. What this says to me is that we're not reinventing the wheel on this kind of work. This is pretty revolutionary, of course. And another, you might get to it later, but that's a lot of edu... You're going to get to it later, a lot of education for the faculty, which are, you're going to be... That's going to be pretty tough, I think.
Absolutely. And so you're thinking exactly the way we are thinking, which is that we need to provide our faculty with professional development, as well as to give them a forum for them to be able to think about how students learn.
How does the, how is the faculty taking this? Is, what's another better word for that? But how are they absorbing this? Are they ready for this kind of new way of teaching? The other question is, back in the day, I've asked this question before. When we were much younger, we had this open-classroom concept, I guess in the high schools, I can't remember, but it failed. It really didn't work. This is obviously not the same methodology, but it kind of sounds the same to me.
Right. So we are approaching it in a methodical way. Are all of our faculty excited about the launch of professional development? I will have to say, not yet. But it's possibly because they don't know what it is yet, right? So we're embarking on a persuasive venture to include our colleagues in what we know to be true. And this is the process by which we are persuading our colleagues.
So the difference, when you reference open, years ago, and yeah, it did fail, simply because it was just a space consideration. It was not a pedagogical consideration, and technology really didn't exist for. This is really much more engaging the student in student-centered learning, active learning. So the student is taking, if you will, more responsibility for their learning via the pedagogy or activities that are happening in the classroom itself. So it is not analogous to open classroom. It may look that way, but it's not, simply because the pedagogy is inserted, as well as technology. And the focus is on the student. Open classrooms were still faculty-centered let. It was really, it was just a space consideration.
You know, what I like about this is the fact that this is happening in secondary, on the secondary school level. And I want to encourage you to press forward. I like it. I appreciate also the presentation today. But this is definitely now where our students are coming from, guys, in regard to the ISD, and we definitely need to meet them there. And I think that it will help faculty, you know, to meet the needs of our students right now in regard to a 21st-century classroom environment. I mean, you know, we have our students coming from the ISDs, being taught using these methods. And we can't remain in the 20th century, you know? So good job. Thank you very much. I'm encouraged by it.
Well, thank you for validating that indeed, other institutions are already doing it, albeit by another name. They're either calling it collaborative learning, engaged learning, and here... They're either calling it collaborative learning, engaged learning, and here at Tarrant County College, we're calling it active learning. But yes, it is very widespread. So, today, I'm going to quickly touch upon two of the recommendations that the ILE advisory panel has already made. And then, at another point, I will return to share with you information about the third recommendation. So, the two recommendations are the adoption and scaling of the Active Learning Academy, focused on integrative learning. And the second recommendation is to launch a new Integrative Learning Fellows, and I'll provide you with information about what these two entail. And Dr. Evans, earlier, you mentioned that there are other colleges and high schools that are doing it. And our faculty, through our surveys, expressed the need for engaged learning. And so, they asked, when we asked the question, "What are you currently doing and what more do you think you should be doing?", indicated to us that they would like professional development in being able to teach these strategies. And so, what you see is a chart that depicts what they said, and the input that we gathered from them were through various phases of our work. Of course, just the whole notion of the integrative learning environments came from our visioning sessions. So, again, from our faculty and our staff. Through the learning symposium, when they were exposed to different configurations, and we documented their thoughts through the faculty, two faculty surveys that we submitted, and of course, through the focus team that went to AAC and U. So, it was not something that the advisory panel came up with, but something that faculty indicated that they wanted to do. The thing that's going to distinguish active learning at Tarrant County College is that we're not just going to be teaching the pedagogy and encouraging faculty to use the pedagogy. What's going to be different is that we're going to support the success of the pedagogy through the use of appropriate technology and space, right? So, we're hoping that the success that we will see in our students will be compounded by the fact that we're creating an environment where the pedagogy that faculty are using will succeed. Graduates of the Active Learning Academy will be given an opportunity to apply for and participate in the Integrative Learning Fellows. This is a fellowship that we're making available to faculty who may have the desire and the disposition to think about the scholarship of learning. And we're going to rely on the Integrative Learning Fellows to serve as facilitators in the Active Learning Academy, as well as to collaborate with our Office of the Provost personnel to work on assessing student learning outcomes and creating signature work. And signature work really is capstone learning experiences, and for us to find a way to document these learning experiences through an e-portfolio. So, the fellows will truly be engaged in higher education, cutting-edge practices. What we have created is an Active Learning Academy implementation prototype. We proposed for the prototype to go through summer of 2020, and the prototype depicts for you the different academies, active learning academies, that we are going to be launching and have already launched. So, thus far, we completed a cohort in the summer. Right now, in fall 2019, we have two cohorts that are concurrently running. We will have a condensed cohort in the spring, where faculty will meet every week for 13 weeks, and then, in the summer, we will repeat that cohort. Okay? And just to give you an idea of how we're engaging through voluntary participation and inviting faculty to be a part of the Active Learning Academy. This is what it looks like through the year 2025. So, we've programmed it out so that you will have an idea of the different locations where the academies will be held, and the invitation for our, to make it easy for our faculty, no matter where is it that they live at Tarrant County College, to have a location that they can participate in, whether it's at the start of their day or toward the end of their day. We hope through the Active Learning Academy that we will impact all full-time faculty, including adjunct faculty, and then, our staff that supports Learning Commons. And we hope eventually to have a minimum of 155 Integrative Learning Fellows, although we know Paige McMinn will tell you that we have high interests in that area, and we may be enrolling more Integrative Learning Fellows than we originally anticipated, with an impact of 2,271 graduates by the year 2025, impacting 167,000 students, hopefully. And speaking of impacts, we hope that the results will speak for themselves through all of these performance indicators in course completion, integrated student learning outcomes, course retention, course grade persistence, and all of the national benchmarks, which provide us with a pulse on student success. And I'll end by saying that part of our communication plan is to ensure that people understand what the Active Learning Academy is. And this morning, we conducted our third Dean's Institute sponsored by the Center for Teaching and Learning under the Office of the Provost, where the session topic was information about the Active Learning Academy provided by deans who have participated in it and faculty who have participated in it as well. And I believe Dr. Sosa did the welcome this morning on behalf of the ILE advisory panel. And with this, I am going to conclude and ask if you have further questions.
In your section here where you show the number of students engaged, is that cumulative from now until 2025, or how do you define that?
It is cumulative, and it is the average of the number of faculty we anticipate and the average number of students that are impacted by the faculty who participate in the Active Learning Academies.
Okay. And what percentage of the students would be engaged?
We hope all the students who are taught by the faculty member who has gone through the Active Learning Academy. And we hope the numbers will be larger.
Yeah.
I was having trouble getting this to show the red light, but just wanted to comment that Tarrant County College has long had a reputation for excellence in teaching. I think that's been one of the strong suits for many, many years, and this is really going to enhance that and take it to the next level. So, that's a lot, a lot of work has gone into it so far, and there's still a lot yet to come, but it's going to be worth it.
Right. And I thank you for validating that. And again, the impetus of this was from our faculty and staff, who said, "Yes, this is something that we need." And I just want to commend the ILE advisory panel. I am the champion, the advocate, the convenor, the facilitator, but I'm only the conductor. It is they who make the music of the symphony, and they who should take the credit, because when I ask for 100%, they give 150%. So, I just want to make sure that you know the caliber of individuals that we have at Tarrant County College.
Excuse me.
Go ahead. Can, ladies first.
Ladies first, thank you. I appreciate all of the work and the wonderful product that you have here, which is representative of your ongoing work. And I just had a minute suggestion that in that beginning statement where you said, "Would foster an interdisciplinary transformative collaborative environment that facilitates the conversion of theory into practice to develop world-ready students that you add slash citizens?" I think it's important that what we're really doing here at the college, yes, we have students in classes, but we're really working to train students for real-life living. The other thing I had a question about, was there any financial impact? I mean, and I didn't know how the, all of the participation of these people has impacted their teaching schedules, you know, are there any incentives? Is that a part of it, et cetera?
So, the ALA is being held on a Friday when classes are not being held. In addition to that, one of the reasons why we wanted to engage the deans is that the deans can then help us support faculty so that faculty can participate and succeed. So, faculty who are opting to participate, their schedule will be modified. Does that make sense?
So, classes are taught on Fridays, but we focus on having adjunct teach on Fridays so that there are opportunities for students with the full-time faculty.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. I appreciate that.
So, the bottom line is that there's no additional financial stipends, et cetera, for the participants of this program? For the fellows, that's a title? It doesn't come with grants or stipends or anything at this point?
Thank you for asking. We do have a budget, and yes, the fellows do receive a stipend equivalent to one course for each of the semesters that they participate in. So, it's a three semester commitment, and for each semester, they receive a one-course equivalent stipend.
Okay. And so, once they complete the fellowship, is that cumulative? Does this increase their salary, their income, or is it a one and done? Are they, do they become trainers? I'm just interested.
So, as far as whether their fellowship is incorporated into their promotion, it's a discussion that the Faculty Framework for Student Success team is looking into right now. So, that's an excellent question. And the other question that you had was about, do they become facilitators? Absolutely. And that's a model that we hope to explore further, but we've had that discussion, and that is our hope. That is our desire. Any other questions?
Let me ask you, first of all, this sounds pretty revolutionary to me. It's a long way from some of the classrooms I remember sitting in, and it's a good presentation. I appreciate that. In lay terms, give me the elevator speech of what this is about.
About the scope of?
The whole ILE process.
So, what we would like to do is transform the way students learn at Tarrant County College so that what they learn is relevant and applicable to the real world, so that when the jobs that they think they're going to be trained for that will not exist five years from now, that they have the skills and the ability to reinvent themselves so that they can advance and be successful. And through their success, they can help their community succeed.
Good elevator speech.
Wonderful.
Very good.
Outstanding.
And I only had to go four or five floors to get that.
And I love, love the collaborative approach. I think that helps ensure the success of this, this whole thing. It's a wonderful program.
Yes. On page 27, you have some acronyms, ISLO, is that Individual Student Learning Outcomes?
Institutional Student Learning Outcomes.
Okay. CCSSE?
Community College Survey of Student Engagement.
All right. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you for asking.
I want to congratulate everyone that's involved. I know this has been a tremendous amount of work, and I'm looking forward to seeing all of this come to fruition, and I know it's going to be evolving, I'm sure. You talked a little bit about preparing the students when they actually get in the work environment, and I know it's still working, that these are a lot of the skill sets that employers are looking for. Can you tell me a little bit about how we're engaging with the businesses, the business, and just to kind of find out from them, you know, how do these skill sets compare to what you're actually needing today? And as this evolves, how are we going to make those modifications?
So, we do that right now through engaging our advisory committees. Every program in our career and technical programs has an advisory committee. So, it is through that advisory committee that we receive input. Okay? Thank you.
May I have one more comment? Just to reflect on the action we took today, which was to issue a contract to contract providers. I know that most often when we talk about go to college and get a job, and today, that's really not the reality. So many more people are having to make their own work and be their own job. And so, I just think as we do this, we need to have that forefront in our minds. Our students cannot expect to walk out of college and get a job, or even to get a job while they're in college. They have to learn to be their source of employment, and how do they do that? And so, this program certainly should help them towards that. And I'm here to support it, and I know that good work has to be supported by good dollars. And I always tell everybody wherever I go, that Tarrant County has lots of people who are well-paid to do the work they do, and we're going to plan to keep it that way. So, I'm hoping that you can go full speed ahead with this. I think it will have a tremendous impact throughout the community.
Well, on behalf of the ILE advisory panel, I want to thank you for your continued support, because without your support, what we do would not be possible. So, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Jovanini.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you.
The CCC Board will now conduct a closed meeting, as authorized by Section 551 of the Texas Government Code, in order to: A, seek the advice of its attorneys; B, deliberate real property matters; C, deliberate personnel matters; or D, deliberate security devices or security audits. And that will be held here after a brief recess. or security audits. And that will be held here after a brief recess.
There being no action in closed session, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move in a second. We are adjourned.
All right, sir.